All right, good morning. I'll call over to the regular scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting on this Tuesday, September 6th, 2016, and ask if everybody please join the board as we honor America with our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda, as always, is public comment number one. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on items that are on today's agenda. I see one person moving to the microphone.
Good morning, Laura. Good morning. I hope everybody had a fun three days.
Very much.
Okay, good. I'm Laura Solson, 1705 Buchanan Drive. I'm here to speak briefly on the first item, agenda item, which has to do with the resignation and then the filling of the county attorney's seat. First of all, I'd like to offer my sincere hope for Mr. Holmes that whatever personal issue is in his life right now, that having some of these duties removed will help him and help his family find peace. The next thing I'd like to do is just speak a couple minutes historically. I think all elected positions are important, obviously. This particular elected position, it carries some special weight when it comes to affecting citizens in the community. I think maybe sometimes sitting in the administrative side, it means a lot, we forget that the major duty or an important duty of this job is to prosecute and interpret the law when it comes to criminal activity and behavior. And therefore, I think the voice of the people is very important and public involvement in laying is very important. The other thing I'd like to remind everyone is that in the last six years, three times, sorry, seven years, I believe, but we three times have appointed elected officials rather than going to a special election. Each situation was very different from each other and the decisions that were made take a lot into account. And I know that it would take many things into account this time, including budget, including timing, but I want to remind you, especially since two of the three of you originally came to the board with appointments, it does give the benefit sometimes of incumbency. And Marty, you're waiting to find out on yours, Rick, you know how yours came out, and of course, the third one would have been with Lucy Martin. And I just want to urge as the discussion occurs, because we know there are discussions occurring out there, I've had discussions with people also, but let's all keep in mind that sometimes the most important thing we can do is put an elected position to the people for election. Thank you very much.
So, Laura, I just need to know, are you advocating that this board take a, and we're not discussing that part today.
I understand that.
Are you advocating this board take a particular step? Are you suggesting the special election is the right way to go there?
I'm not suggesting it as 100% right now because there's information to be gathered. Cost is a factor. The expectation and feedback from the auditor's office about whether we will even get a good or a decent turnout for that election, I mean, those are two right there. We don't know who else might be interested, you know, what the field would be of people who would even be eligible for appointment. I'm asking that as the discussions go forward, as some of the discussions win, we had the unfortunate death of Paul, and we went through the process, we also take a look at, in an appointment situation, the possibility of appointing someone who would only serve for two years and say, okay, I would not run for reelection. So I still have not come down on a particular path because I think there's a lot of information and there's discussions still to be had. But I want to really emphasize here that with a fourth person automatically chosen by appointment, who's indicated, who says, "I will run for this long term," it seems to be setting a pattern for us. And this one, because of its specific nature, how it can so adversely affect individual citizens or benefit them when it comes to the execution of the law is something that I just want us to make sure that we give equal weight to everything, we get all the information. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you for sharing your views.
Still on public comment one, anybody else wishing to address any item on today's agenda? All right, seeing no one else, moving to the microphone. We'll move on to acknowledgement of the resignation of Story County Attorney Stephen Holmes. And so I'm gonna read his letter. It's relatively short. "To the dear members of Story County Board of Supervisors, after much consideration, it's my decision to resign as Story County Attorney. You may accept this letter as my official notice effective September 30 at 12:00 PM. It's been a privilege to serve you and the people of Story County. Thank you sincerely, Stephen H. Holmes, Story County Attorney." So, first item is acknowledge the receipt of that resignation.
Move the acknowledgement of the receipt of the resignation.
Second down.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? I would just say that, and I said this to Stephen when he came in to hand in his letter of resignation, I have really, really enjoyed working with him for six years, and even more than that, the 30 years that he spent serving the people of Story County, I think the importance of that and the value of that cannot be overstated. And, you know, for all of us, I guess the time comes when it's time to move on, and clearly Stephen has decided that, but I want him to know how much we appreciate his service to the people of Story County. Any other comments?
Well, Stephen.
Clinton?
Aye.
Cheney?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. It is acknowledged. Now, next part of this item is setting next week, to actually go through some of the process that Laura just spoke to us about, to choose what option this board is going to utilize in filling that position, set a timeline and a process. Want to give the public plenty of advance notice, so we want it on today's agenda, notifying everybody that we would have the full discussion and consideration of what option we would use and what the process will be for filling the vacancy next Tuesday.
Duly noted. It could have been included in the entire initial motion, but since it wasn't pre-stated that way, I will move that we acknowledge that next week, September 13th, will be the opportunity for the board to choose which option to fill the Story County Attorney vacancy and consider any other action and timeline.
I look forward to that conversation, and I have a second to add, Mr.
We have a motion and a second. Comments? Just by way of updating the board as chair, first thing I did when Stephen came in and gave me the resignation was, well, first I asked him if everything was okay, and then I asked, I told him how much I appreciated his years of service. The second thing I did was I picked up the phone and I called our first Assistant Attorney and asked her if she needed any support from the board during this interim period where Stephen is still the county attorney, but we're moving through the process of his resignation. Jessica relayed to me that her and her staff could handle it just fine. We're fortunate to have Jessica as our first Assistant County Attorney to help get us through this time. Any other comments?
No.
Clinton?
Aye.
Cheney?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Set next week as the opportunity to discuss where we go from here. Next item is consideration of proclamation for September as National Recovery Month. Jill Hill. Hi, Jill.
Good morning.
Morning.
I have CFR present as well. Do you guys, I don't know how we do this.
I have one.
You have it, okay. All right, and so you're gonna go ahead and read them?
Why don't you read it in for us?
Ready. I'm Jill Hill with YSS, and we're here to celebrate National Recovery Month in September, so we're really excited about this. Community Family Resources is also present as well to proclaim, for the proclamation of National Recovery Month. So, I'll just go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the behavioral health is an essential part of health and one overall wellness, and whereas prevention of mental health and or substance use disorder works, treatment is effective and the people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental health or mental and substance abuse disorders is essential in achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental health and or substance use disorders to implement preventative measures, recognize the signs of problem, and guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services, and whereas the most recent national survey on drug use and health recourse, 2.5 million people aged 12 or older received specialty treatment for a substance use disorder, and 34.1 million adults aged 18 or older received mental health services. Given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must continue to reach millions more who need help, and whereas we help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, and the White House Office of Drug Control Policy, and Story County, Iowa advise all residents to participate in National Recovery Month. Now therefore, Story County, Iowa hereby proclaims the month of September 26th as National Recovery Month.
Super. Any comments?
My question would be, is will there be ongoing activities for the community on this topic, and how are you notifying the public about some of these opportunities for more awareness?
Oh, yeah. YSS always will put out a list of items that we are doing here in Story County and the surrounding area. One of those events actually had a takeaway card for you guys to take with you, an evening of hope and healing. We have various providers who are helping us with this event at ISU Memorial Union, and it is held on September 13th in the evening time. We have various events such as starts at 5:30 with the Mindfulist activity. Dr. Kim Teal of Iowa State will be guiding an interactive experience with a focus on living a meaningful life with less stress. And then right after that is Marty McGivern, who comes from California. She is a wonderful speaker, comedian, but yet speaks the truth of her own journey and her own path of being a drug addicted person, human trafficking victim, but also having mental health issues as well. And so she is coming in to do a presentation to treat or to communicate about mental health and substance use issues and how it can impact and how you can learn and grow in a stress-free life, even with negative traumas in a person's life. We're also doing radio gigs, Publicly Days Parade is this Saturday, so we'll also be in the parade float, so lots of exciting times. Community CFR also has some events as well.
My name's Sharon Connor, and I'm the outpatient supervisor at Community Family Resources. We also are gonna have an event for this month as well. It will be our fourth annual Walk for Wellness Race and Walk, it's a 5K, and it'll be in Ada Ayden Park in Ames on September 17th. And so this would really be an opportunity for those who celebrate, to celebrate recovery and for both mental health and substance abuse disorders, and everyone is welcome to participate in the event. We have volunteers, we have runners, we have walkers of any ability, so that is our fifth event for this month.
Great, thank you.
And I've always, never photo op, anyway?
Yeah. First of all, I would move the proclamation that established in September as National Recovery Month after that.
I would second that, and you would be commended for the evidence as you go on behalf of the county.
Absolutely. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments? Clinton?
Aye.
Cheney?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. We officially proclaim September as National Recovery Month, and now we'll do the photo op.
Rick, can I have the official one?
Well, I'll give you the official one.
You have the official.
Okay.
I have some people I'm gonna take these to school. Let's start with this. You all got to see an illustration of every day.
Sounds good. It's great.
Good. We're here, don't worry about it. Here we go.
Okay. And Margaret, just scrunch in a little bit.
Yeah, you're trying to tell us what you need.
I think that's good. Act like you like your time.
Yeah. Yeah, you got your, Mike, you got your global one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry for your.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. All right, we're gonna hold minutes from August 30th from next week, so we're to personnel actions as listed, board.
Move approval as listed.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Clinton?
Aye.
Cheney?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Personnel actions passed, consideration of claims, board.
Move to approve claims, addition of road closure seventeen.
No.
No, just claims. Just claims. Yep.
Move to approve the city various complaints.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Cheney?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Claims passed. Now consent agenda. We've got road closures seven, please add road closure 1712 and utility permits 17020 through 17022, and also please add replacement of carpet at the county attorney's office in the amount of $11,542.16, which didn't quite get on.
Okay. Move approval with no changes?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Clinton?
Aye.
Cheney?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Consent agenda passes. That takes us to public hearing items. Third, how about that? Third and final consideration of ordinance 244, an ordinance for the purpose of prohibiting the use of electronic smoking devices in public places. This is our third and potentially final reading of this. Anybody wishing to comment on this? It's passed this board twice. Any of you guys wish to comment on this?
I think we hit the point.
All right, we've hit it off. We've received no comments in the meantime. Board, any comments before we open the public hearing? All right, in that case, we will open the public hearing to discuss, anybody wishing to discuss, ordinance 244. Margaret? Okay, you approve it. You gotta hold, Margaret, you gotta hold perfectly still when I get to the hearing items. All right, so I will close.
You're almost done, don't understand.
I will close the public hearing and turn to the board for action.
Move approval of ordinance 244 on third and final reading, for the purpose of prohibiting the use of high-end smoking devices in public places.
There are times in a holy office that you get the privilege of doing something that really serves both today and a lot of tomorrows, and I would second the motion of ordinance 244 along those lines.
Outstanding. Motion and a second. My only comment would be, assuming that this vote passes, oh, we gotta have an effective date. Wayne, would you amend your motion to include today as the effective date?
Yes, today is the effective date. Thank you, I will.
Marty, you're okay with that as your second?
Thank you.
And assuming that this passes, this vote, it will mean that all vaping devices will henceforth be treated as a tobacco product in the same manner as a tobacco product here in Story County. Further discussion? Clinton?
Aye.
Cheney?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes third and final consideration, and ordinance 244 is in fact enacted immediately. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you to the group and all of you that have worked on this for a number of years, especially working through with the City of Ames and ISU and so forth. We appreciate your work, and I'm sure the public will appreciate it as well.
Absolutely. Good job. Next public hearing item is second consideration of ordinance number 245, amending ordinance 243 by renaming a portion of Grant Avenue to Hyde Avenue in unincorporated Story County.
Good one, Jerry.
This ordinance was proposed before you August 30th. As you mentioned, Rick is a request to change Grant Avenue to Hyde Avenue for the unincorporated portion of Story County. This is located in North Ames, Township 84, Range 24, Section 21 and 22 of Franklin Township. The board of supervisors did approve the first consideration August 30th, which was last Tuesday. This is the township, beginning in the northern portion of the City of Ames. We're in that unincorporated area. Currently, the city is going through the process of changing the name of Grant to Hyde for the north portion, north of the unincorporated area at the same time. Background, again, this is a request to improve consistency, logistics, public safety, there are no, we're not aware of any major issues with delivery of emergency response in this area. It's primarily a response to changes that have taken place, that have taken place, and changes that are gonna happen within the near future. Currently, the road is Hyde from north of Bloomington Road as it goes through Bloomington Heights, Bloomington Heights West, and Bloomington Court residential subdivisions. It's about a half-mile stretch that's in the city. And then the area that's in the county, it turns into Grant Avenue. Again, that's about another half-mile stretch. And then to 190th Street, so again, that incorporated area is currently Grant Avenue. The city is working on changing that to Hyde. So from 190th north to 180th, it's Grant, and that changes to 530th, north of 180th to the city of those corporate limits. So we're dealing with eight total parcels, four of those are single-family dwellings, five of them would have address changes. Zoning wise, it's mostly A1 agricultural, however, on west side of the road, the northwest portion, there is an AR agricultural district. This is a map that really pretty much sums up current and proposed activity. The dark blue line represents the area of the road that's currently Hyde, that's in the city of Ames. Everything in light blue represents the city's corporate limits. What you're looking at today, and the request to change, is that portion that's red dashed. It's about a half-mile stretch. The city is working on changing the same road from Grant to Hyde for the northern portion of that area. The entire line is about a mile and a half. History wise, the first change came about in 1998 with the Bloomington Heights Lot 7 subdivision. Then after that, September 19th of 2002, with Bloomington Heights West subdivision, the rest of it was constructed and named Hyde. Same information, just shows you the aerial, again, from Bloomington Road north to the corporate limits, that's all Hyde, unincorporated area, and the incorporated area of the city names as Grant, and then north of that, it turns back to Grant. City's plan gave us the change, that northern portion that we showed you, they did go through. They had two considerations, one was August 9th, the second one was August 23rd, and they thought those were the answers to approve the change. Their last consideration is scheduled for September 13th. Again, an aerial, a little closer view, the blue dashes represents the parcels affected by the change, including address changes. Again, we're looking at eight parcels, four of those are dwellings, and then five parcels have address changes. Site photos, this is Bloomington Road, I'm gonna show you that. We're gonna be going through the subdivisions, heading our way north. You see most of those have been changed. There's a couple of sites that would need to be changed, those would be prepared to be changed by the city staff. There's where it begins, unincorporated, so it's beginning Grant Avenue. Residents, first residence on the east side, this is the second residence on the east side of the road. There's a communication tower on the west side, third residence on the east side of the road, this is the fourth residence on the west side. Page's crossing, this is in the City of Ames, this road actually feeds into Grant Avenue. It's 190th, panning north, west, and east. Again, as far as the process, we did send the letters to the affected property owners August 12th. We did receive a call, as we mentioned last Tuesday, from a property owner who was concerned about the request, and stated that if the city intends to change this road, that they should look at other roads that have similar dual names, and then also this person didn't think that there was a major problem with response in this area compared to emergency services. The board of supervisors did approve resolution 1719 on August 23rd, setting the first hearing, which was last week. Ordinance 245 was published in the three publications on August 25th. We did notify emergency service staff, the city names, Luke Gilbert, Mary Greeley Medical Center, the E-911 coordinator, Ames Postmaster on August 12th. We also sent information out inter-agency to all the departments with regard to this, and we received no responses back. We also communicated with the sheriff's patrol and asked if there were any incidences that they could share with us, and the information came back that there wasn't any major incidences, but however, they did feel that this was a good change for this area. So, points to consider in review of this request, when it's all said and done, we would have a contiguous, continuous stretch of the road, a mile and a half in length that would have the same name. The north and south collectors, Bloomington Road, 190th Street, carries the most amount of traffic in this area. Would it make sense for traffic turning onto this road to have the same road name? This is in a rural urban transition area, the Ames Urban French Department. Change is gonna be happening eventually, and as that happens, we're gonna have more people, more properties to respond to. And then the last point is, again, the city is working through this change, if the county doesn't change it, then we run at risk of having some confusion, possibly with emergency response, with deliveries, with the general public. So, we view this as a positive step in the right direction. So that brings us to the recommendation, which is for the board of supervisors to adopt ordinance 245, which would be the second consideration, and then schedule the third consideration, which would be next Tuesday, September 15th.
I didn't hear you mention, Jerry, cost to landowners?
Yeah, normally for a new E-911 address application marker, it's $100, and we would like to leave that, for those existing property owners. This is something that's not a big deal, but it's something that's important.
And I think it's important that we acknowledge that we're referring to the existing ones and not any new homes or anything that would be coming later time.
Any questions for Jared before we open the public hearing? Okay, in that case, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to address the board of second consideration of ordinance number 245. Everybody did a good job sitting still. We'll close the public hearing and turn to the board for action.
I would move approval of ordinance 245, amending ordinance 243, and set the third and final reading on next Tuesday. and set the final, third and final reading on next Tuesday, September thirteenth.
I'd second that. Of a motion of second, further discussion. Clinton?
Aye.
Chief? Sanders, aye. Two forty-five passes second consideration, third consideration is set for next week. That gets us to additional items, discussion and consideration of fiber access agreement between MediaCom and Story County, located at the Human Services Center. Barb? How are you this morning?
Good morning, Barb. Barb Steinbach, Information Technology. I'm great, thanks. How are you guys?
Good.
Good. I'm bringing to you, I was approached by MediaCom, they're looking to expand their business into areas that don't normally have the type of services they're offering. We've been approached for two locations so far. One is the Human Services Building, which you saw in the contract, and just recently, they've also approached us about the Animal Control location. That is something, once everything is said and done, and all of the renovations are done, we do need to look at their connectivity a little closer. What MediaCom is proposing is they install the equipment, and usually there's a charge for this installation, whereas if we decided in the future to elicit their services, that that part would already be done, and there'd be no charge to us. I did ask them to make a revision to the contract, and as you'll notice on the first page, about halfway down, they just, they stated that there is no obligation on our part to partake of their services once this is in. We just have to make sure that we don't damage it in any way, or take it off the wall, or do anything to it. So I think it's a good deal. As far as the Human Services Building is concerned, we're one year into a three-year contract with Centurion Link, if they can offer us the same services at a reduced cost, it does make sense to look at that. Any questions?
I think competition is a good thing.
Are you too?
No, I just wanna make sure, no cost to the county, no obligation by the county to ever utilize MediaCom, but we could choose to do that, and really, our only responsibility in this would be to not damage any equipment that MediaCom puts in the building.
Exactly.
Questions for Barb?
Don't see any downside. I think competition is a wonderful thing, I think we have the ability to benefit from
Potentially, I absolutely agree with that. Wayne, anything?
No.
All right.
Thank you for looking into this.
I just wanted to mention as a side note, we did hear in our discussions with Colo Telephone, Central Air Broadband, on other things, that they did state that MediaCom is one of their biggest competitors right now, so they're being very aggressive.
MediaCom or Colo Telephone?
MediaCom.
Colo's been aggressive for years.
Yes, they have.
Growing, but I just think competition is good for all of them.
Yes.
All right, if there's nothing else, I would take a motion.
I would move to approve the consideration of fiber access between MediaCom and Story County Human Services Center in South Keller.
Second.
Motion of second, further discussion. Chief?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes, thanks Barb.
Thank you.
While we've got Barb here, let's have discussion and consideration of quote between Colo Telephone Company and Story County IT.
We've had, over the past couple of years, we've had issues at McFarland Shop, whenever it rains, they lose connectivity. We've had different vendors in to look at it, they suspect maybe a squirrel chew. We're not, we have no documentation on the original connection, it could be that there was no casing put in, who knows? It's been a long time ago, so we did get three quotes to replace this, and Colo Phone and Central Air Broadband came in, the lowest, actually half, almost half of competitive bids. We did approach Communication Innovators, who is normally our go-to person, and then also another person that we've used for DHS connectivity, so... And judging by the work they've done for us, I'm very confident, we made sure that all the quotes are the same, they will be ripping up what's currently there, placing a conduit, and then placing the fiber within the conduit, so that we can have even faster speeds, but no downtime when it's raining.
You mean, McFarland needs to be able to use the internet when it's raining?
Yes, they do. That's why they're in the building.
Question, I noticed a quote here, seven thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars, seventy-six cents. What is the ongoing cost of that, usually a monthly fee?
No, that would be direct, direct install, that would be ours, there would be no, no maintenance, no nothing, once it's in the ground, it's ours. If we do have an issue with it beyond the ninety days, then they would charge to come back in and repair the thing, but this is just a one-time fee.
Now, when you say they would come back to repair anything, is that by someone maybe digging or hitting them that would destroy it versus failure of the equipment?
You're right, failure of the equipment does have maintenance period, where it's good for, I believe, a year, but like, okay, if somebody dug it, or if a squirrel dug out in it, hopefully we won't have any more squirrel problems, but those kind of things are considered not covered, so... And that would be really our own responsibility to make sure that there's no digging there.
Any questions? Who's there present for five seconds?
There is none. It was just fiber that was put in by the county years and years ago, no one quite knows when. It's pretty old. And judging by the equipment that's in the basement at the Conservation Building, it's been in there probably fifteen or one years, so it's time for a refresh.
When I was growing up, you know, my first thing was string down hand, across my house, maybe across...
We're improving on that.
Definitely.
I was about lighting for conservation.
Slightly farther down there. That didn't work in the rain either.
No, it didn't.
Yeah, the conservation is on the Story County Network, they use it more and more because they have access to all of our services, so...
Any other questions for Barb? I'd take a motion.
I would move to approve our quote from Colo Telephone Company to the Story County Conservation Shop for the dollar amount of seven thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars, seventy-six cents.
Second.
Further discussion. Chief?
Aye.
Clinton?
Aye.
Sanders, aye. Passes, thanks Barb.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barb.
No agency reports today, departmental reports, facilities management first. Cal Pearson? Hi, Cal.
Good morning. Cal Pearson, Story County Facilities Director. Quarterly report, and I'm going to read down through my list, and I've got a quick PowerPoint to go with it afterwards.
You've got a PowerPoint?
Oh, wow.
Holy cow, that is, yeah.
Kind of real good one, but I think I'll get the general idea. Should give it a try. Okay, can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
I'll start off with our regular, regular report of going down the list, snow days this quarter, that was good, assisted auditor's office in primary election, delivery pickup of supplies, repaired concrete, administration in northwest parking lot entrance, exterior windows of all buildings have been cleaned, transition from CLP to conservation, maintenance and custodial services, safety training with secondary roads, oil change in generators at the Justice Center, replaced flooring in restroom of HSC, vehicle hit north side of CLP building.
That wasn't your vehicle, let's just point that out, that was somebody else's vehicle.
Replaced water main at Justice Center, installed keyless entry and ridkey doors at McFarland Park, modification in H unit in the jail to address negative airflow, carpet and county attorneys at Justice Center, began lawn care at Animal Control, working with OptiMay on solutions for peeping tom at Calhoun Group Home, false alarm issues at Human Service Center, installed three-way switch at McFarland Park, stripping a multipurpose room floor at McFarland Park, began heat pump fan replacement program, front door damage at Human Service Center and replaced valves at Justice Center. As far as work orders, the administration building had seventy-six completed work orders. The old CLP and still-present Group Home program had thirty-two work orders and eleven on calls this quarter. Conservation had fourteen work orders completed, Human Service Center had sixty-two and three on calls, which were the fire alarm, the problem that I'm gonna speak about in a little bit. Justice Center had eighty work orders and two on calls, and jail had twenty-five work orders and seven on calls, and three misleadings, comes to a total of two hundred and ninety-two work orders and twenty-three on calls. This is, this is items that come up above and beyond our normal work day of mowing the yards and taking care of the systems in our buildings, so with that, I'll move into the...
Cal, do you know off the top of your head how many of the on-call for CLP and Group Homes was related to the CLP administration building versus the three Group Homes?
I would say they were all Group Home.
Okay.
What we, what we have at the Group Home is, years ago, we had a problem with plugged sewer systems, which eventually would flood the basement with raw sewage. We installed water detectors throughout the home, and that's usually what it is, is we've gotta buy the toilets and stuff, and they get damp, and they give us a call, and that's what they usually are. And it's completely eliminated the problem downstairs by putting those systems in, a great benefit to homes. So we started the administration building, and probably seen, we tore up and replaced concrete in back, that was a trip hazard, I think that's the second time in my tour of duty that we've had to take this up and replace it over the years, but I think this last time was due to when we refit the administration building with the geothermal system, we dug up a lot there, and just, just a little bit of settling, so hopefully this, this'll last for a while. This is the filter system that we have in, downstairs on the geothermal system, that we put in these clear filters now, so we can not only monitor the chemistry, but we can also have a visual check on, on what that media is doing that's going through the well field and through our pumps and through our, through our heat pumps. This is what we don't want to happen, all of our heat pumps in all of our buildings have these strainers, and if you're not up on your chemistry and watching what's going on with that, that water, these plug and the heat pumps go out on high head, and you don't have air conditioning or heating, so that's, that's things we wanna stay away from. This is just a, a report of a chemistry that we do on all the buildings of our geothermal systems every month, and makes recommendations if we need to add chemical or, or what's going on that they feel is a concern. Beauty Life Building, OptiMay, as most of you know, four days before the closing of the sale of this building, we had a intoxicated texting underage car driver run into the building and hit this column here, and tore up some of the landscaping, and...
You gotta almost be trying to get to that post, to get to that...
And, yeah, and there was another sign here, he went by it, I don't know how he didn't clip it, but at, at first glance, you might say, oh, this looks like this is just mainly cosmetic. Well, when our contractor got there and got a look at it, there's two cement concrete piers within that column that are inside of this, so to repair it correctly, that means we have to shore up this and this, and this has to be completely removed, the piers have to be completely removed, and basically start from scratch, put this back together the way it was. I think it was twenty-one thousand five hundred was the estimate, and we're still waiting back to hear from the insurance company where we're at on that, so unfortunately, nothing seems to happen fast when, when you're working on situations like this. I hope we can have it done by the end of the year. Our contractor said once they get the okay, we're still eight to ten weeks out by ordering the specialty concrete and bricks that we need to put it back together, so hopefully it'll be done one of these days. Human Service Center, since we built this building and moved into it in, I think it was nineteen ninety-eight we moved in, after the first few years, we started getting these, these false alarm, fire alarms through the building, and that building was, was, had a zone system put in, one of the last commercial zone systems that was put in back in ninety-eight. After that, they all went to addressable system, so this, this was kind of an, an old system that unfortunately, we ended up with there, and it was always traced back to a device somewhere. We put a new head in, and we'd be, sometimes we'd go a year, maybe two years, and pow, the same problem would happen in another zone. So we've been dealing with this for, for quite some time, and last January, when we had our false alarm, we replaced the panels with a, with a hybrid. What that panel is, is it's for customers like us that have a zone system that would, that want to upgrade to an addressable system, so we're able to put the panel in and put back online. We had two more false alarms since then, we replaced some devices, and it's finally to the point where we need to replace the devices now, to, and we'll have a completely new system, and it'll be an addressable system, we'll know exactly which head goes off, and hopefully, we'll be back in business again. Next item is, this is the ceiling tile, we're always concerned checking ceiling tiles, we see water stains like this, we wanna act right away on that, know what's going on. What we've got, we see these a lot in the spring, and the last couple of years, we've had failing condensate pans in our, our heat pump units. This is, this is what one of the worst looked like this year that had a leak, and we replaced this, this coil here is what's up in the ceiling, and that's where your air moves through, and in the, in the summertime, the hot air condensates and drips into this pan, and it should run to the drain, but we looked through all these heat pump units and found out that they're all in some, some kind of a deterioration phase, and we've purchased the pans and we're in the process of changing them out. This is one of the worst ones that we had, and we can see over here, it's completely come apart. My bouncy finger here. So the good thing you see here, we put chlorine tablets in these pans, and, and these are what a lot of people like to point their finger at when you hear the sick building syndrome. There's no, with the, with the chlorine we put in these, and the, and the maintenance we do on these, there's no sign of anything like that in our buildings, and as soon as we see a tile that's wet, it's replaced, and we find the source, and it's taken care of immediately, so... So that's something that we, we definitely want to keep on top of. This is vandalism issue, this happened a couple of weeks ago, I got a call early in the morning, come in, and we had an upset person that decided to break out the windows to the front doors of the Human Service Center, they also spread some peanut butter on the window for us too, for some reason, and threw a rock through the interior door also, so things like these come about, and it's about three thousand dollars, we put laminated, basically correctional facility-type glass as a replacement in there, so it can't be broke again, but fortunately, he did some dents to the, to the frame, and, but everything functions fine, so I guess we just live with the dents, but that whole door system, you know, if we had to replace that, then eight to ten thousand dollars, so that's kinda frustrating. ASPD is actively working on the case, trying to pull fingerprints, see if they can find the responsible person that did this, so... Flooring and HSC, this is the last restroom that we replaced this year. We've done all the carpet. The only thing that is left in that building for flooring to replace is the common areas in front of the elevators and you see we're in deterioration on these two. It'll be coming next year's budget with wanting to request to replace the flooring on those three levels. Again, some more, they're just cracking at the seam and it seems to be getting hard and brittle and just breaking down. This is just a shot of the geothermal pump system that we have at the Human Service Center that we have pretty much the same as all the buildings, but this is the smallest one. They're all redundant systems. They have two pumps. They run on a lead-lag system and they switch every four days and if the lead pump fails, the lag will pick up and take off and we'll get a text or an email that we know there's a problem and come in and everything's still running. Windows. Last year budget time, I put in, I think, seven thousand for windows over there, but since then, the curtain wall windows in this building, there's something about windows and a curtain wall with this building that basically all the windows in those curtain walls have gone bad and there are some degree of how bad they are. The circle, it's hard to see, but that's completely, you can't see through that and on the other side, you get the, it's just, it's in between the glass, we've lost the argon and they're failing to one degree or another, so I had to increase, ask for some more money to... It's tw- double what I had in the budget is what I'm trying to say, of windows I need to replace now, so I still have money in my budget, but it's more than I expected at budget time. Justice Center, recarpeting and county attorney's office. This is something that's been happening the last couple of years. It's just the traffic on the carpet is wearing the material and once it gets broke, you go over it with a vacuum and this is what you see. These are all different areas that I took pictures of, so that's something that's going to be coming up that needs to be addressed in the next couple of years and we have a lot of it to do. This was a joint project earlier this year with Barb's department when we put the new fiber optic conduits in the building. It started out with maybe just a couple sections of concrete we need to replace and as the project moved through, you can see that it became more and then the horizontal war machine was set up there and as they come through, see the arrow there, they pushed the concrete up on the first pole. In the other picture were the guys in the trench on the second pole, they caught the old fiber and wound it up and they broke it and we had to tear up the other side of the concrete, so what we ended up with was all new concrete. It's done the way it should be done and we've got the new pipes in and we shouldn't ever have to tear that up again. And there's just a picture of what we were dealing with before. That was our fiber and telephone wires that the conduit was broke when the building was built and they just filled it with dirt and covered it up and we had to re-dig it up every time and snake a new wire through, so that's gone and it's the way it should be now. A year ago, we took over the generator and well field from Alliant Energy and had some concerns about fuel. We think we had old fuel in there from many years ago, so our fuel vendor did some sample analysis and if you can see in that one picture, that's water that's in the bottom of that tank, so we're working with our vendor to get that removed from the tank. That holds about seven thousand of fuel for the two generators out there, so that's important. We need to get that out of there and what that water comes from is condensate through the years on the inside of the tank, hot and cold, and eventually we end up with water in there that has to come out. Also, we took over the well field and in the well field, you can see down the pit, it's full of water, the sump pump never worked at that time, so Alliant paid for replacing the sump pump, run new wire out there, they replaced all the valves and we actually had to dig up around the vault and reseal penetrations there and there's some of the valves they replaced that were leaking at the time, so that's all new in there. And this is just another shot of inside. When they replaced those valves, they flushed those circuits out in the well field and it created a lot of turbulence and old settled, you see the green in there, that's dissolved copper and again, we have the clear filter in there so we can visually watch what's going on and also we have the chemistry we do once a month to make sure there's no, the chemistry is not getting aggressive or acidic out of line in the system. And also, been busy this year, we've noticed ever since we moved in that water pressure volume has been marginal in that building at the far ends in the jail and the courtroom and this winter, it rapidly got worse and we thought maybe it was the water softener. We went to take the water softener out of the line and the valve broke at the stem, so at about that same time, the city of Nevada called and said that we want to put a new water meter in your building, which worked out good. We had to shut the water off, but of course, the main water valve right down there on the floor didn't work, so they shut it off the curve, so we replaced one of the bypass valves for the softener and had to come back later with the assistance of our mechanical contractor and shut the system down and replace that main valve and we also had the opportunity to clean out that, that's a strainer there. You see on the floor all that that came out. This was a big help as far as upping our pressure and volume. We're back to where we were, but it's still not as good as it could be and I see with new businesses and other users coming online in that area. In the middle there is a domestic water pump booster that we have in this building that was required when we refit this building. I'll probably be coming to you in the next budget year wanting to install one of those out there to increase our water pressure out there and keep it consistent. But you can also see over here on the right, that was our main water valve center with the big hole after fifteen years and you can see the buildup of the, on the valve flapper itself. Another project we had started last winter in the jail is on the left there, this is an enclosure for the, in the jail showers. There's twenty of these in the shower and on the right is the face cover where the inmate stands and they were never sealed well around there in these canisters on the left that are in a state of deterioration, rusting away and we were hoping to get those all replaced last winter, but we didn't. It's a priority this year because if they get any worse, the inmates will be able to pull those faceplates right off the wall because screws will not hold in that canister, but we're ready to go on that, so hopefully we can complete that this winter, fall. That's just another shot of the shower area. Conservation, we've transitioned over to the CLP maintenance custodial and just quickly the custodians stripped that floor in that multi-purpose area, put seven coats. That picture doesn't do it justice, it's like wet water in there now, just beautiful. They really did a nice job. And you know, we're excited to take over this building. There's a lot of opportunity there. On the left side, you can see the old freon line going up there. Isn't any insulation left on it and it exposed a hole in the attic. It looked like we had some wildlife maybe getting in the building and on the right, that's just after our staff got done, everything's new and plugged and looking good and like I say, we see a lot of opportunity out there and I think it would be a good building for us to work on to where we like to have our buildings.
Yeah, well, you get to see the difference of what deferred maintenance looks like, right?
Yeah.
And at McFarland Park, there's lots and lots of deferred maintenance that you guys are getting to dig into. It's important for us to remember, Cal, we don't have new building anymore. I mean, even a Justice Center is not a new building anymore and so we're going to be dealing with some of this stuff.
Correct, and like I say, I pointed out some things that need attention and they're going to need attention, but overall, I think we have excellent facilities and they're going to last a long time, but we just...
If we keep putting the money and manpower in that we need to, to keep up with the maintenance, I agree with you. Too many times, it feels like, you know, you're penny wise and pound, individuals are penny wise and pound foolish. They don't spend the money they need to spend and things just deteriorate and it's a credit to you and your staff that are, you wouldn't walk through a building and think they were old buildings, but that's credit to you and your staff.
I appreciate that, that it helps having a board of supervisors that understands what's going on and willing to give us what we need to keep them looking the way they do.
I appreciate the fact that when you were looking at those, placing those valves at Justice Center, that you took the time to share the pictures and the story with it because it's fascinating, a building that is only fifteen years old, that you would have that kind of problem and it is, this is how you learn to do this job and support you and your partner.
Questions for Cal?
Done. Keep doing what you're doing. I see you're at the conservation because that's one of those buildings that I think the, your staff can, it's pretty special and we provided theirselves on a count basis and the thing is to keep it up for what it could be in the years going forward.
Thanks, Cal.
Thank you.
Next, we get to hear from information technology, Barb. Hi, good, Barb?
Long time you'll see.
Yes.
I have some bad news. I don't have any pictures or anything. It's exciting to show you and maybe that's a good thing because the things I would show you would probably need more want to see, so. I wanted to start by giving you an update on some of the projects we've been working on, one of the longest. It's been almost a year now, we've been working on this managed print solution and going into it, we didn't realize there was that much work into just gathering data and information, not only on how we use our printers, but how the users interact with them and the copiers and the scanners, so we did put out an RFP last month and received four responses. I asked if anyone wanted to be part of a committee to evaluate these and we got a few people that sat down with me and we threw out two, one of them because they did not respond correctly to the RFP, even though we tried to search through what was submitted to see if we could pull some of that out. So the two that we have chosen, we met again last week and said, you know what, we can't make this decision on our own, so we're going to have them present to you next week and so that we can get some help in deciding which would be the best solution for State County. So that should be exciting, so look for that next week. I'm not sure how long the devils will take, but it's on the agenda. And as you know, we did a security assessment. I just got the results back, the draft back from the vendor, looking through that, it's seventy-six pages long and what they will do, once I approve the draft, then they will present, you know, the executive summary and the to-do list and some direction for us and how to address some of the issues that we may encounter and Rick, I appreciate you coming down and talking to him and as he said, some of these we won't fix, we'll just say, I accept the risk. But it went through all of the different departments and what we can do better, so exciting stuff there. We did roll out a new antivirus. Our old antivirus worked well until they sent out the new version and then it didn't work with some of our software, so we had to replace that and some of you may have seen some slowness at first. That's because it was collecting information that the other software already had, so once it collected all of that, you should not be experiencing slowness yet. If you are, let us know. And we have that for another three years, so if all goes well, we'll keep it. Another thing, we've initiated a project called Know Before and if you recall, I did mention this at one of the staff meetings for management. This is a training security project for our users, involves email, could involve other things. We rolled out our pilot email last week and we got a few responses. The test was that HR has approved a four-day extension to the holiday and had some pretty interesting responses to that, so we just used like ten people in our pilot group. But what some of these will do, we gather the results from how the people responded. We get a report who opened the email, who opened the attachment if they forwarded it, so we get a lot of information on that, but also on some of the campaigns that will roll up, you'll get, as soon as you do something, you'll get a splash and it'll be a hand picture that comes up on your screen and it will tell you what you did and what you shouldn't do and what to look for next time. So the first one didn't have that, but what we'll do after, after a couple of months of sending out these campaigns, then we'll have enough data so that we know where to point our training for the users for security. And the Know Before program has provided a ton of training, so look forward to that. Also, we've had a visit from our new phone vendor, Orion. They came through and we met with each of the departments and just wanted over some lingering issues or things, questions they had about using the phones. That went really well. We did have some work to do on the auditor's phone system. Initially, we had started with auto attendant, didn't think that would work, then we were looking at perhaps maybe a call center function. I think we've settled on just a hunt group and mainly we just want to make sure the calls get answered and no ability to leave voicemail and this is especially important as we're coming into elections, we want to make sure that we're able to address those calls. Networking updates, any questions on our projects?
Not so much a question, but something I'd like for you to at least explore, particularly on this Know Before and once you have finalized this and truly have a good handle on it, touch base with Robert Carlo from ISAC. I think that this would be something we want to share with our technology group of things that, you know, we're trying at local level here. It does, I believe it's ideas like this that can be shared with other counties as well, depending upon what we get from it and any of the other things like your security assessment updates and stuff like that. I'm sure that we can get you, I can get you on the agenda at a later date if you'd be just willing to just kind of share a little bit about what we've found and what we're trying to do, particularly in the area of technology assessment.
I think the Know Before did come from ISAC. I heard about it through ISIT. I know worth counties, several counties are already doing this and we're telling great things about how it was working, so. And the security assessment, this is a field, it's expanding, it's blowing up. When I first started looking for vendors to help with this, there weren't a lot, but as it becomes a more important issue for IT, there are more and more vendors offering the service, so definitely, once I have that, I can certainly share some of the information, probably not all.
Right, thank you, yes. Thanks, appreciate it.
We have completed, for the multi-agency group with the city of Ames and ISU, we've completed our E911 redundant network. This was utilizing some of the DOT fiber that we received several years ago. It is up and running, we do have traffic running over it and what this will give us is redundancy in our 911 services so that the network does not go down for dispatch, it'll automatically fail over to the current or to the old system, which isn't as fast, but still they will not lose their network, so that's exciting. And their phones are separate from that, just so you know. This would be like, for instance, the state connection so they can run plates and things, so this would be what that type of data would run over this network. The fiber replacement at McFarland shop, we just talked about... The fiber replacement at McFarland shop, we just talked about that. And I did have a question for color phone, is if you do mind if we put your quote on the agenda? A lot of vendors don't want that and they said they're small enough, they don't care. So very easy to work with and we're going to enjoy that project.
Plus that they were half as much as their competitors, I would think you would want to publicize that.
Yeah. Yeah. And we scratched our heads and we said, well, provide more detail or, you know, this vendor explained the number of fiber strands that would go through tillers more about that. And they were, you know, comparable. So I'm not quite sure why there was so much cost difference, but I think we went the right Our CLP fiber bypass and retirement is complete. As Cal mentioned earlier, we retired everything in that building. The reason it was difficult is because CLP was there before HSC. So everything ran through CLP before it went to HSC. So we had to take them out of the loop and it's a lot easier said than done, but we've managed to do that. And I did get all of them approached to OTM to see if they wanted any more of the phone numbers that we had on our T1 before we canceled that. And we did get those ported over, so now they have everything they need from us. So I think we're good with that. It's nice to put some of these things to bed. Miscellaneous topics. We do have the new HelpDisk software, which I've been warning people about. IT is testing it this week with our own machines. What this will give you as the user is more insight into what's going on with your ticket. The current software is pretty hit and miss. If we close a ticket, sometimes you get an email saying your ticket's been closed, sometimes not. What this will do is you'll have a portal that you'll log into and you'll be able to see the progress. You'll be able to see the notes that we've added. You'll be able to see what anticipated completion date we have. So we're excited to be introducing something like this to our users. It will help communicate kind of where we're at on things. I know, and I'm the same way, if I call somebody with a problem, why aren't you fixing it? If I don't hear anything, I think they're not working on it and that's not always the case. So I'm excited to offer this to the county. We've been working on a Skype solution for county attorney. Kind of fell into a better solution than we, what we had originally planned. We thought the tablets would work for this. It turns out the tablets were kind of unsteady, cutting out, weren't keeping the session open. So we had gotten some large monitors for conservation, for something that Mike wanted to use as the presentation on the wall. The vendor accidentally sent us one too many. And so when we asked them for return information, we didn't receive anything. I'm not saying we're not going to pay for it, but until we do, we're going to use that monitor for the county attorney's Skype solution. So we installed a computer in the conference room with the justice center's office and we're just waiting for a long HDMI cable, but then they'll be able to Skype big screen and we've attached a webcam to that. Now for the Ames office, we're not quite so fancy. It'll just be a laptop that they'll be able to use Skype and do the, you know, the face-to-face meetings while not being in the same room. We've also done a pilot project with the county attorneys on the video sharing. Had so many problems with, before the sheriff's office had to burn the videos and they were complaining that some of that would take all day. And that's all they would do, all day is burn videos. And then the county attorney wasn't getting what they needed in a timely fashion. So, and really with the improvement of the videos that were submitted for cases, once you fine-grain it, I know John Essison told me once, I want to see the color of your eyes. So when you get a video that's that clear, it makes it larger. So it used to be you could burn it on a DVD, hand it over and you're done. Now the videos are getting larger and larger and they're too big for a disk. We had options you could use like a thumb drive. Sometimes a thumb drive isn't the right solution because data can be manipulated on a thumb drive and it's not really a read-only as a DVD would be. So Scott and Kyle worked together to create an FTP type of site where the video is loaded on.